I didn't see anyone walking in, I'll go ahead and start it. Five thirty. We good, Kate? I guess whenever it turns. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, city council meeting to order. Go ahead and ask Councilman Smith to leave us an invocation.
Name is Paul and son, Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, as we gather at this meeting, unite our hearts and minds in common purpose. Grant us the wisdom to work together effectively and in humility to value each person's perspective. Guide our discussions and decisions that they may honor you and serve our shared goals. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. Applause.
Okay. Do we have any agenda amendments? No. Okay. Gonna move on to announcements. October fifth through the twelfth is Cruising the Coast. Um, October seventh will be our next city council meeting. And October fifteenth will be the next planning and zoning meeting. We do have guests here today, we have a pro- proclamation for the Constitution, Constitution week for the Friendship Oak chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Whereas it is the privilege and duty of the p- American people to commemorate the two hundred and seventy eighth anniversary of drafting the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty third as Constitution week. And where now therefore, Michael J. Ford, Mayor of the City of Bay St. Louis, along with the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty third as Constitution week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On behalf of Friendship Oaks, daughters of the American Revolution, we thank the city council and the mayor of Bay St. Louis. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chamberlain. Ms. Champ- Malin.
Want a pitcher? Want a pitcher? A pitcher.
You got others with your group?
Okay, moving on to our minutes approval. Agenda item number five, I'll call for a motion to approve the minutes of September second, twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Smith.
Do I have a second?
Davis, second.
Any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries five zero. Uh, agenda item number six, a motion to approve the minutes of September ninth, twenty twenty five recessed meeting. Have a motion?
Motion, Smith.
Have a second?
Moan in seconds.
Any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries five zero. I think, uh, Ms. Chamberlain. Think we had the, uh, oh, she already left.
Yep.
Perfect. No public plan. Okay, moving on to, uh, planning and zoning. Uh, I will call for a motion to follow planning and zoning's recommendation and approve the application for a variance of three foot resulting in a five foot setback to the side yard, a variance of six foot resulting in a nineteen foot setback to the front yard, and a variance of ten foot resulting in a ten foot setback to the rear yard to complete proposed renovations submitted by Tony and Ray Tindell, uh, located at three oh six North Tulum Street, parcel one four nine F dash zero dash two nine dash one two nine. It was approved four zero at planning and zoning. Do I have a motion?
Moan in motions.
Do I have a second?
Smith, second.
Any discussion? All right, vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries five zero. Moving on to agenda item number eight. A motion to follow planning and zoning's recommendation and approve the application for a variance of a six foot resulting in a two foot setback to the side yard to construct and attached carport submitted by Benning, Ben and Kelly Bailey, located at one oh seven Carroll Avenue, parcel one four nine F dash zero dash two nine dash zero nine five. It was approved four zero at planning and zoning. Have a motion?
Moan in motions.
Do I have a second?
Second, Smith.
Any discussion?
Discussion, I just had a couple of questions. Um, for clarification, so it looks like, I've, I've never been a big fan of such a short, uh, you know, two feet's very minimal. I don't wanna have any invasiveness on the neighbor or watershed. Uh, but it looks like there's a, currently a carport that sits on the side yard property line. Mayor, do you wanna expand on that or is that, is this gonna be, so they're just redoing that current or?
I think they've taken down, attaching it to the house if I'm not mistaken, and, and are they here?
It's gonna give them two feet now rather than being on the property.
Moving over toward the house a little bit.
Okay, so it sits currently at zero and then they're, okay.
Yeah, pretty much.
I got you, okay, that's clear, how's that?
Any other discussion? All right, vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries five zero. Okay, moving on to agenda item number nine. Motion to follow planning and zoning's recommendation and approve the application for a major site plan review for a four-story bar, tavern, nightclub, and lounge submitted by Corbett Nico LLC, located at one oh five North Beach Boulevard, parcel one four nine L dash zero dash two nine dash zero three five. It was approved four zero at P N Z. Also, just wanted to note, uh, Councilwoman Holmes, uh, has joined the meeting at, uh, five thirty seven. Uh, do I have a motion? I will make a motion to follow planning and zoning's recommendation and approve the application, uh, for the major site plan review. Do I have a second?
Second discussion.
Yes, absolutely.
So, uh, just to clarify, what's the, the height on this? Are you the engineer, do you wanna just?
Uh, Freddie Fountain, Fountain and Associates, thirteen, three thirty-four Seaway Road, suite two oh two Gulfport. Um, we are under the required fifty-foot max height. Believe it was forty-seven nine was the overall height of the building.
And Mayor, we're fine in terms of ladder trucks, we have every capacity, should there be fire, we're good, ours extends up to that. Yeah, I'm just personally, and subjectively speaking, I, you know, I think the, the first proposal was, was probably less invasive when it comes to, I know the concern is parking. You know, obviously now there's not the need because it's not a hotel boutique. Um, so you guys are just submitting what you can do there, but, you know, the irony is most likely it's probably gonna be just compound the parking issues, whereas the first application probably you had a plan to mitigate that, but again, this is allowed by zoning, so, um.
Yes, sir, and we submitted a set of plans that went through staff review and we've met all the requirements of the staff. Address comments as they come up and we will be submitting more detailed plans during the construction permitting process.
Then also I watched the planning and zoning meetings. Uh, whenever, whenever you look at this, it says bar, tavern, nightclub, and lounge. The first three floors are arcades, correct? And then top floor is a bar, but more of a event venue? Okay, good.
So it's children, like, under eighteen, under twenty-one arcade?
And there, there is glass on the front and rear of the first and fourth floor to give youth of downtown and the heart.
And will the children have to be accompanied by an adult, I would assume?
No, so we plan on having security where they can't get to the fourth floor unless it's a birthday or a venue rented out.
Miles, do you mind talking to the mic just so the people at home can hear? Thank you.
So we plan on having security that makes sure that kids don't get to the fourth story where the bar is unless it's a venue that's dedicated for birthday or that, that spot is rented out.
And you're not planning on having any meal preparation up there?
This is my food guy. Sorry, um, we will be doing catering, uh, but it will be coming from the restaurant.
Offsite, okay.
And is that catering just for the venue that you're renting or to the arcade?
Uh, just for the venue that we are renting.
I also noticed on the original plans, y'all did make room for parking underneath, like, your first floor was supposed to be for parking? The original plans that was denied? Is there something that y'all may be interested in considering?
Um, with the space of the ar- the arcade, we're only gonna be able to fit around forty to fifty games on all three floors, so it would really take up space, because you have to, on the first floor right now, we have, uh, where you get your prizes and you can buy, put things on token, stuff.
And also, if, if I remember correctly, the first plan, you would've had to cut the curb
Yes.
to put the park in there, and that's when the offsite parking came in, that's.
Exactly. You would've lost three city spots to cut the curb, um.
And parking was required because of the nature of what it was, based on the hotel rooms and boutique, so now it is no longer required.
Any other discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries six zero. All right, moving on to the mayor's report.
We had a, someone had to hand up.
Yep.
If, uh, we do ask that if you have something to talk about on the agenda items that you rec- that you sign up prior to the meeting, uh, if it was regarding the application, uh, we asked that, that, uh, conversation happened at the public hearing at the planning and zoning meeting. No, no, you're good.
You're good.
Okay, moving on to the mayor's report.
We good. Thank you.
Uh, council business. I did have some discussion about the council procedure ordinance. Uh, it is a draft, uh, some of the things, I know we talked about them, uh, a little bit, uh, earlier in the, in July, a little bit later in July about wanting to do this to where we can have a set, uh, procedure. I do wanna point out just a couple of the things that kinda changed, or some of the high points of our discussion from the original. Uh, we do, uh, we do have two public forums, uh, public hearings, or public comment sections. The first one being at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items, and then, uh, second one gonna be at the end of the meeting for general, uh, concerns. So, we do wanna make it available for the public to still talk at the meetings. Uh, that was one of the, I know one of the high points in discussion that we had previously. Uh, one thing that would change, uh, in this procedure ordinance is the regular meeting would, uh, be on the first Tuesday of each month instead of the second, or the first Tuesday after the first Monday. Uh, I think this is kinda more consistent, uh, with what everyone's doing. I know whenever we were going to M M L, we had to reschedule our meeting, uh, and, and to, others did not. Uh, so that was one of the things on there about that, as well as, uh, we kinda changed the structure of our meeting to where we will have call to order, roll call, approval of the agenda, a presentation agenda, public, our first public comment for agenda items, a policy agenda, our routine agenda, mayor's report, council business, a public comment for non-agenda items, executive session, and then adjournment. So, kinda just a structure change. If, if anyone had any discussion or wanted to talk about it, please do now so we can make some edits and bring it back at the next meeting.
So, so the major change, so we're gonna continue obviously with the, the public forum agenda items and planning to add a non-agenda item public forum shortly after, towards the end of the meeting?
Towards the end of the meeting, yeah.
And then one other item, and I do agree, I think this is something that needs to be discussed. Um, I know it does have the sergeant of arms, having somebody here.
I'm sorry, that was something in there as well, we did have a sergeant at arms. Uh, I personally, and I think a lot of others would agree, uh, that we should have a officer present at the meetings. Uh, would like to have one here tonight, I'm glad you brought that up, 'cause I noticed one is, um, but that was one thing that was added in there as well.
Mike, I know we used to have, and it's, I guess it's different on the police chiefs, I guess, in the past, some would be here for the meeting, some would not, so would that be something we can get in place where it's either the police chief or somebody within department?
We can have somebody here.
Okay.
I'm trying to find that part, there it goes.
I think it's on page fifty-eight.
Just wanna make sure it is in there. Yep. Yep, okay, perfect. Uh, but any other discussion, questions, concerns about the way this ordinance is presented currently?
Personally, I like the way it is, is it right now? Just with, with, like, speaking on, uh, the agenda.
Agenda items?
Yeah.
That's, I, I think the, uh, we saw, I guess, kinda through this as a, uh, I guess as a rough, rough draft is what we've been trying. I think, uh, we've noticed some people come up here and talk about, I'll use like, uh, the, the general, uh, the blighted property issue they were having with a neighbor. Just giving people the opportunity to come up here. We still encourage them to talk to your council member first, talk to you, and that's actually in here, I believe that we urge you to contact your council member and administration first. In the event that, uh, that doesn't happen, then, you know, we encourage you to come here and let us know, so we can address it and make it happen.
However, that won't happen. People will just come here.
Come here?
Yeah, they'll, they'll overlook the council, they'll overlook council at large, they'll just come up here and then they'll.
Yeah, I just, I, I'd like having an opportunity for, for individuals to come up here. I've, you know, the past four years, I, I don't think there's been many times to where, if you're sticking to the three minutes, um, you know, very, very minimally, does that probably get abused? Or does it, you know, become an issue? I'm not familiar with in the past four years where it is a persistent issue. Once every, maybe year or two, you might have something, um, but I've never encountered it to where it's an issue having anybody come here. That's what we're here for, we wanna hear from the public. Obviously, always encouraged to try to reach out to administration if it's an administration issue or the councilman, but sometimes people do wanna address items to all of the council to get everybody's feedback. So I'm, I'm a proponent of giving the ability for the public to speak, um, whether that's agenda items or non-agenda items.
Uh, would y'all like to, I guess, run through, make a vote if we wanna keep that, change it? You wanna, we'll start with Nancy, are you good for keeping a second public forum or a second public comment?
Aye.
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 I'm good with keeping both.
Aye.
Keeping, to have two, uh,
Two separate.
two second public comments. Uh, also, for the record, uh, Councilman DeSalvo arrived at five forty-five.
I'm good with, almost like saying, keep the time limit under.
If it becomes an issue in the future, then we can address it.
The, the biggest thing we've used before, it was almost a a way sometimes people would get public up here to bash the administration, and I don't think we need that type of.
And, and that's exactly where.
Government no more, I think we need to be professional, and if they went to the proper challenge, they can get the satisfaction, come here, file a grievance with us, or air what they gotta say, but not just to, to come here and try to point fingers and make people look bad, we don't need that, no more.
Exactly, and that's my concern, because it's always been that way.
We do have a, a area in here that does address decorum, and I think it leaves it up to the president of the council. If it's not in manners and with the decorum of the meeting, then it can certainly be.
And that's one thing I wanted to, and, and I guess for reassurance, uh, for that concern, is I added in here, or we had it added in here to, uh, they're here to address the council, so if at any point in time it turns towards the administration, I'll, you know, politely ask them to return to their seat, so. I will give you some reassurance there on that note, uh, to keep that, uh, ability for them to have a second public comment.
Did you vote challenge?
Oh, yeah, I'm good with it.
You good with it?
Mm-hmm.
Good with it? I just wanted to give everyone an opportunity to talk about it, and then that way we can bring it back to, would you wanna bring us to the October seventh meeting?
Whatever y'all wanna do, I mean, I'm happy to receive, if anybody's got other comments, that I can compile a list for y'all and submit that, distribute it to all of y'all. I mean, I hope y'all wanna do, can I wanna put, you know, by next Tuesday, send your comments. We can make a list, a list of comments, so here's all of them. And then we can make a decision on how you wanna do.
Was it fixed to where it did state it was the first
Yeah, first Tuesday.
Tuesday after the first Monday?
No, so we changed it to first Tuesday, first Tuesday, and then third Tuesday, first and third Tuesday.
Okay, 'cause I thought last time we discussed it, we wanna keep it the same.
So, correct me if I'm wrong with, uh, ordinance, if it is passing unanimously, uh, unanimously, then it will go into effect immediately?
Yes, ordinance is.
Correct.
If it's unanimous.
Unanimous.
If now's a thirty day.
Then you have delay and stuff.
So I guess.
We still have to advertise ordinances, I mean.
And stuff like that, okay. All right.
But again, if y'all wanna send comments, happy to compile a list and distribute that out to y'all. If y'all say by next Tuesday, we can put the list out Wednesday, y'all can make changes, whatever you wanna do.
Yeah, perfect. Y'all wanna, if any comments, have them to, uh, the administration by Tuesday and we'll address them, so. All right. Uh, we have Hancock County Tourism, I know Kyle had a memo and email.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to bring this in a public record and, and, um, awareness for the council. So ideally, I would've preferred to be able to address somebody from the Hancock County Board of Tourism. Um, did reach out to the president to inquire if there would be somebody here. Fortunately, he couldn't make it, and there was nobody else that could. But the real, you know, of course, the reason of bringing this up, and it's not to try to, you know, pinpoint, it's not trying to point fingers, but it is our sole responsibility here as council people to ensure that we are being the best stewards of taxpayer dollars. So dating back to our meeting, I believe it was our first meeting, um, for the budget meeting, we were asked to, basically in the budget, to double what we typically pay to Hancock County Tourism, which is then therefore used as a pass-through, what we've always been told to, as a pass-through that funds Cruising the Coast. We were informed shortly thereafter that those funds that we allocated in month to month, and they were allocated to the ten to twenty thousand a year, so it was spread monthly, and we voted on it. Um, so I wanted to make sure that we are doing our due diligence, and this is more so, probably Josh, you and I voted on this for about four years, not, you know, unbeknownst to us that that wasn't the intended purpose of the allocated funds. The current council was made privy to this, I think, right, right as budget workshop, but, you know, it's important for us, again, we take an oath to, you know, uphold and, and ensure that we're doing our due diligence and being the best stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And when we hear that we are budgeting for an intended purpose and it's allocated and it's not spent for that purpose, I think we have a due diligence to ensure that we get answers. Um, I think this could certainly be explained with a simple look back with the P and L, with the, the checks and balances, um, although that has not been afforded to us at this point. So, um, I do wanna read, you know, again, I had requested somebody, uh, whether that's the president or somebody on the board to be present, so these questions could be asked and then advised by the president of the, the board to send questions of note I did not receive answers back to. But I just wanted to read this for public record, um, and for, for the record of, and the knowledge of the council. Um, these are the questions, and so, and this is an email submitted, uh, that I submitted on Thursday, September eleventh, addressed to the Tourism Board, advised by the president of the board to send this to. So I said, "Good afternoon, Bill, although it is unfortunate you're unable to address the council at our upcoming meeting on September sixteenth, I do appreciate the opportunity for you to address a few questions. Per your request, I have formulated questions and I'm sending the suggested email for the current director. Please ensure the responses are received prior to our council meeting on Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Question number one, does the board have records minutes from the monthly board meetings where the revenue and expense reports were reviewed dating back from fiscal year twenty-two to current? If so, please provide those minutes and or balance sheets. And speaking with the director of Cruising the Coast, Woody Bailey, informing Hancock County Tourism began defaulting on payments for twenty-two, twenty-three, and part of twenty-four. What is the total amount owed to Cruising the Coast for the money received from the City of Bay St. Louis? Question number three, what was allocated twenty thousand annually from the City of Bay St. Louis spent on during the default period between twenty-two to twenty-four? The director of Cruising the Coast stated he met with the board prior to the passing of Ms. Myrna Green, which was December twenty-four, to inform them of the payment default. When was the board made aware of the payment default to Cruising the Coast? What was the board's action on the non-payment? Who was informed of the non-payment? The city paid Hancock County Tourism on a monthly basis. Once the board was made aware of Cruising the Coast not receiving the city funds, what was the monthly allocation from the city spent on once notified? Hancock County Tourism hosted Wednesday night in the park and received an in-kind donation of free rent of the depot grounds from the city council in April of twenty twenty-five and thereafter monthly. Were funds raised for these events through sponsorships, and what was the amount of funds raised? How were these funds spent? And lastly, what is the outstanding debt for Hancock County Tourism, and how is that debt being paid? Thank you for your attention to this matter, and I hope you understand that I have an obligation or taxpayers to inquire about funds that were not spent for the intended purpose of allocation. I'm confident that a simple look into the balance sheet, which reflects annual revenue and expenses, could answer many of these questions. I do believe an entity that is receiving taxpayer dollars should be held accountable and provided financial statements, especially when the funds were used for unapproved expenditures from the city council. Um, and again, this goes in line with, you know, and I credit the council of wanting to better understand any money that we give to any entity or any in-kind donations, we need to have a better understanding of what those financial, the footings are. And if we're giving taxpayer dollars to something like that, we do deserve the right to know where that money is spent. Um, again, unfortunate that we didn't have an opportunity, I know they go into abeyance, I think, at the end of the month. You know, the president addressed the, uh, board supervisor a couple of weeks ago, unfortunately, there's not, not, not one question asked about what the funds were spent there either. So, I just think we deserve, taxpayer deserves answer to this, and ultimately, we're held accountable as city council people to ensure that, you know, we are being good stewards and asking these kinda questions just to find out. So, again, I just wanted that part of the record, so that, that can be something that, um, that we do ensure in going forward, that we, I'm hopeful we can get some answers to this. So, appreciate you letting me, giving me an opportunity to speak on that, George.
Thank you for sending it in, so, and please keep us updated, uh, with anything else you get.
Yeah, I, like I said, I'm hopeful it's addressed with the, with entire council, not just one, but yeah, certainly will.
Any other discussion?
Nah, I just, thank Mr. Lewis for asking the questions and reaching out, um, hopefully, we can shed some light on it, like, say, myself, last eight years, and Mr. Lewis for four years, been up here, and it just became an issue a few years ago, but just shows that even though things are in place when we take seat, we need to investigate and ask certain questions to make sure it's being done the way it's supposed to be, just 'cause it's been that way for so long, don't mean we just go with the status quo. So, thank you.
Any other discussion outside of Hancock County Tourism, general discussions?
Uh, council business?
Yeah, council business.
Um, I do wanna bring up a request for the community garden on Booker Street where the water well is gonna go. Currently, we don't have a full fence, um, between the private property and the Boys and Girls Club. I would like to look into possibly fencing that all the way off, that'll also help with vandalism in the future.
Yeah, uh, Mayor, if you can just follow up with, um, Jason, I had tried to find out, and he was gonna look into it to see when this, when we were looking at videoing some of the sewers, uh, the sewage areas at Third Street, so if you're basically from Bay Oaks to St. Charles, pretty much every manhole, there's starting to be a washout and divot, especially there's one right in front of Ms. Anita Warner's, probably, yep, there you are. Uh, natural speed bump, I tell you what, um, but yeah, it's becoming an issue. What's that?
Inverted speed bump.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, that whole area, and they didn't find anything originally. They're going back looking to see if there's some laterals in there. Down towards Bay Oaks, Ramonito on that end, it's been like that for a while, but the one right there before you get to St. Charles is.
It's getting worse, I mean, it seems like it's deteriorating.
And, and not sure if there's something that, when they get to cleaning, if they might've blew something out, or something got blown out that wasn't leaking at the time, so they're going back over and looking at that area, trying to find out if it's just a lateral in that area that's doing it all, if it's something that's actually in it.
So they haven't ever found any visible damage, what's causing erosion, 'cause here's.
And, and was hoping on the other end down there towards Ramonito, and once you get closer that way, that it would just be throughout the year, sinkage in, you know, in, in the dirt and everything that was sinking that's causing it. But the one up there on Third Street seems to be more than just that, 'cause it's all of a sudden, and it's that, you can.
Yeah, it's deteriorating, yeah.
You can sit, just about sit there and watch it sink. So there's something down there, and they getting ready to try to get it dug up and everything while they over there working.
Okay, and then just had one other question, I know, um, we've been in correspondence, I think maybe Scotty had mentioned there was a, a resident in the area that asked about the lighting on the beach path, and I think there's some correspondence back and forth with, is that the county, is it the city that maintains that?
And I think there's some correspondence back and forth with, is that the county, is it the city that maintains that? I think Scotty was getting with his team to look at the lighting, it's kind of basically from St. Charles down to Bay Oaks, just, you know, getting maybe, you know, increased lighting on those poles there. So I don't know if Scotty had reached out or not.
Yeah, he, he talked about that shit, that's probably, I think, pretty sure that's all our lighting.
It's all our lighting, okay. Um, have we done an evaluation to see if there is, can be some improvements there? 'Cause you did go, there is some areas that it does go for a pretty good length of time without having some lighting.
Uh, we can get them, I don't know if they did it yet or not, but we can get Mississippi Power.
Okay. Is that who's, okay.
Let them look at it, see what they should get.
Alright, that's perfect.
I know they added one back on Third Street.
Okay.
Right, right by the church somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, it was needed. Alright, thank you.
Seeing Ms. Anita, I apologize. Um, we also talked about earlier with that community garden and also with some members of the garden about possibly filling in like the potholes and stuff. I think it's just gravel going into there, but with the big trucks, sometimes it needs to be filled, um, and also the kids sometimes go back there and they play on those rock mounds, the concrete. And I've called a couple of times to, you know, have someone come patrol and maybe ask the kids to leave, but I just hate for someone to go back there and get hurt. I'm good.
I'm good.
Uh, I would just like to take the time out to thank the administration and the council for, uh, showing up today at the, uh, Our Lady of the Gulf Knights of Columbus, uh, meeting that we had. It went excellent, um, Mr. Russo, you did a great job and we really appreciate you what you've done. Thank you.
I, uh, going back, I had one thing as well. I, uh, on the way here, we had a call or talked on the phone about a, a bench that had, uh, public or advertisement of a business on it. Is that, is that allowed or have sent the state law behind it? I just want to make sure we're not in violation of the state law.
Do you have an address for it?
Uh, I believe it's in front of the garden club, uh.
Jordan, are these the donated benches, the metal benches?
Yeah, no, I just, I just wanted to bring it up, uh.
Donated by.
People put the name past.
That people donated.
Done it, okay, just wanted to make sure it was allowed.
I think it says like in memory of or, you know, that kind of thing.
I got it similar.
There's like fifteen or twenty of them around town.
Trying to find it.
There's one, you talking about the one sponsoring the benches and all?
Yeah, sponsoring the benches.
It doesn't.
That's a fun one, huh?
Yeah, and I got it similar, I mean, it's, I, it doesn't say donated by, it's just, it's just a business, so maybe that needs to be clarified if that was indeed.
Donation, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were donated by.
But those are all donated.
Donated, okay, yeah.
Alright. Uh, any other discussion? If not, we'll move on to project updates.
No project update, we do have a couple of items that had gone out to y'all.
Okay.
From Jason, we just put under consent.
Okay, uh, city clerk's report. Now we, uh, I will call a motion to approve the docket of claims twenty-five dash zero four eight and the amount of one million, four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirteen cents, dated September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Moynihan motions.
Do I have a second?
Smith.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so I just had a question, um, claim four-three, four oh three for ceasefire. I know we pay that once a month, um, it's twice for the council, twice for the court. Is that the phone service, internet?
So for ceasefire is gonna be all of our internet and all of our phones?
So.
Not, not cell phones, AT&T will be cellphone and things like that.
So with the council and the court, are we not the same?
No, 'cause you have court department, so we've spread.
So court across the street.
Yeah, court department, it's not just this bill not into. It's broke down to the, by department.
Yeah, so council.
By the person's name.
Okay.
That's how they ring it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Vote the motion?
Aye, aye.
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 Aye, motion carries seven zero.
File with the next one is, your family's business.
Okay, we just marked that Councilwoman Holmes left the room at six oh three. I'll call for a motion to approve the docket of claims twenty-five dash zero four nine, special dated September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the amount of one thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars of a motion.
Motion, DeSalvo.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Lewis, any discussion? Vote the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries six zero. Councilwoman Holmes re-entered the room at six oh four. Um, moving on to the consent agenda, uh, did anyone have any questions and concerns with it as presented?
Yeah, I just wanted a discussion on the, I think it's number nineteen, motion to approve the purchase of a nineteen-foot Christmas tree with lights and a three-foot, three nativity star for twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents from Jubilee Decor. Is that, is that falling under this year's budget or?
It actually will go under this year's budget. We've got capital in, um, that department that can be used.
So then there's an additional, I think when we wrapped up the, uh, fiscal year twenty-six budget, we allocated ten thousand dollars for Christmas decorations. So is that gonna be, are we gonna reallocate those funds? 'Cause that's essentially what this is.
Well, we put money in this year's budget, I think for tables at the community center is what I believe it was. We did not spend those dollars. And that's why when this came in, it was, if we delay it, which we're gonna have to do until the next year's budget, until we look to see, hey, wait, we do have funds available. We could go ahead and purchase it, that way we're not delaying it, 'cause it's a question of, basically, Lynda, you might want to speak to a ti- timing of the order.
So pretty much the order isn't placed like.
Tables till next year.
So this is, this would exceed the allocation then for what we earmarked for the Christmas decorations?
And that's, but we also have, um, and Lynda, maybe you can speak to those four other entities that are donating money.
The ten thousand?
Yeah, we won't, she's got donations so far for.
I know, over five thousand, and I still have them calling and coming in.
Oh, that's great.
So we won't, we'll make up the difference, whatever comes, but we won't get charged for it right now. We, we want to order it, get it in so it'll be in time.
So you actually have donations for thi- this very invoice for the tree?
It's, there's, so it's Christmas in the Bay donations, but there's definite ones when they come in, it's definitely towards the tree purchase.
There is mark for that.
For the, only the tree.
Right.
Yeah, just, I mean, I just, I just have concerns in terms of, uh, we just discussed it last meeting. I mean, we've got part of my ward, you know, that have needs such as, we still have natural gas that's not available. We've got, um, we did a study where we have a lot of our culvers that are collapsed over there. So I think, you know, I'd like to be in a situation where we spend twelve thousand dollars on a Christmas tree, but I think we have, you know, a lot of needs in the city versus kind of the niceties. Um, you know, so I just, I have a hard time justifying that. I think we have a tree at, I know it's not technically ours, it's the county's that does one, and we had multiple trees at the depot. Um, so I just had a hard time justifying spending that kind of money on a Christmas tree, uh, when we have such needs. We've got thirty-nine projects right now, let's say, anywhere from five, you know, if there's a match, it's gonna be anywhere from seven to ten million dollars. So we just have a lot, we have a lot to, we have to take into consideration before spending that kind of money, um, you know, on decorations.
So thi- this is the, uh, so this is twenty twenty-five funds and then we anticipate the ten thousand that we set aside for Christmas lights to be used for what the twelve thousand was gonna be for?
We basically put money in to buy tables for the community centers, which was not done.
Okay.
So that's why there's funds of, you know, first it was, you know, talking to Lynda really, we gotta wait till October one to the new fiscal year. We can't pull the invoice unless the money's there. And looking at the budget, we still had some funds available in there, so we could pull it if the council wanted to do that.
And if we're getting.
And that way we can get the order in, 'cause it, it takes a while to get the tree built and sent out to us.
And we're getting donations, um, those would have to be accepted by the council, right?
They will be, have to be put in for the council to officially accept the donation.
I mean, I'd feel more comfortable understanding what the, what the total of the donations is before we decide on what the total amount is, on, on what we're spending from our budget.
Well, I mean, officially, you'd be spending twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Right.
And then we're gonna take in revenue for whatever's been received, which is four or five thousand dollars.
But we have to accept, we have to accept that.
Yeah.
Any donation we have to accept, so when do we plan on being presented?
Whenever those checks have, have been received, that's when we put it to y'all.
I'd feel more comfortable understanding what the total amount's gonna be. That's just my opinion.
Well, if you put it off another week to two, we won't get it till next year.
How long do you think until we get the donations? Like if we amended this motion to say, when donations are received, it's approved, when do you think they would come in?
Uh, most of them, it's probably the end of this month.
'Cause my only, uh, I guess my concern is we budgeted ten thousand for it. So if the donations don't come in, then we exceeded what our anticipation was by the twenty-seven hundred? Which I'm all for spending the ten thousand because, you know, we agreed upon it, budgeted it for twenty-six. And I'm okay with swapping it out and using the ten thousand now and offsetting it later or whatever we decide at that point. But to me, it's the twenty-seven hundred, I know we're gonna get donations, so.
Not to exceed ten thousand.
Not to exceed ten, yeah, not to exceed ten thousand. So I'll make, make a motion to approve ten thousand from the city and then whenever we receive the other half, the twenty-seven hundred.
Motion actually, because it's over ten thousand dollars, anything over ten thousand, the council has to approve.
That's true.
So it has to be the specific amount that's being purchased.
What, what you're saying, Mr.?
But, I mean, it's gonna be offset by revenue that's going into a different account. So it, they, they don't merge in the same account, you have to have a revenue account and an expense account.
What you're saying.
But you're writing the check and the council has to approve any purchase over ten thousand dollars.
I guess, I guess my concern is under purchasing laws, right? If we approve this for twelve thousand dollars and, uh, I, if this were twenty twenty-six and we approved it for twelve thousand and that wasn't the budgeted line item, then we could be on the count, we could be on the hook for the twenty-seven hundred, correct? As a council, if we exceeded the budgeted amount?
You exceeded your budget amount.
It had to.
And we may, what we may do, that's had to do there, is do a budget amendment to bring that number up.
To bring that number up.
Because of the revenue. We didn't, we didn't budget for the revenue either.
That's what I'm saying, I would.
Didn't plan for that donation.
Love to do it, it's, I just, I guess if those donations don't come in, then we exceeded our budget. Uh, does that make any sense?
Yeah.
But in this year's budget, you have funds available in that account.
That was gonna purchase tables for the community center.
Correct.
So next year, do we plan on taking the ten thousand out of there?
You could swap that.
And purchasing tables next year with the money for the community center?
Right.
So.
But that way you didn't have to delay, because it could be an issue on getting the actual tree in.
Thought you were saying, I just want to.
Correct.
Verify, so, so the ten thousand will come into account next year, but for this year's budget, all the tree, we have the funds available from the tables that was not purchased. Okay.
But the trick is we want to receive the donation in twenty twenty-six and not twenty twenty-five?
It doesn't matter.
When we receive it.
We can take it now, we can take it then, it's just a matter of whenever the cash comes in and the council has to approve it, approve, accept the donation.
So the ten thousand that would be dedicated to Christmas decorations for fiscal year twenty-six would actually be allocated towards new tables with me.
That's what would be the intent.
That's what I would say, what we had to do was to reallocate that.
I mean, it's still, it's, it's in the capital expense.
Yes.
Line item.
Yeah.
Intent, what we put was for that purpose, but.
And how certain are you on the donation?
Pretty.
Pretty certain.
Pretty sure.
Yeah.
Plus I've had a few more calls that I know there's more coming in.
Alright, I'll make a motion, uh, or, I'm, I'll make a motion that if the money doesn't come in, Lynda's gotta pay for the other.
Yeah, it, I mean, I will say that is a little hard for me to justify, I do understand the allocation of the money, but, you know, I'm looking at things in my ward as well that I may have to come up with ten thousand dollars for two. So, it, it's just hard for me to go over what we all agreed and budgeted for.
We can, we don't pull this out and build on it separately.
Separately, yeah, okay, we'll pull, uh, we'll, uh, we will.
So guys, let me ask this, y'all approved this during budget to come out of twenty-six, so y'all are not wanting it because it's under twenty-five or because of the amount? I mean, we discussed this for three different issues.
I think it's the extra twenty-seven hundred.
It's the amount.
The extra two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, which I know is gonna come from donations. But if the donations don't come through, then we exceeded what we budgeted for ten thousand. And I, I mean, I'm confident the donations are gonna come through, but in the event that they don't.
You can put it down that if I don't get the donations, then it's not over, I will pay it personally out of my account. I'll do that, I'm that confident I'm gonna get that much in donations.
Alright, well, we will, we'll pull it off and then we'll vote it.
And just to.
Y'all should have discussed that during budget and everything, instead of waiting till it gets on the agenda to vote for it.
Well, and just answering Lynda's question, I think we started out with twenty thousand dollars for Christmas decorations, it's not down to ten, I'm still not entirely keen on ten thousand for Christmas decorations. I'm more keen on, and the credit to you, Lynda, for being able to get donations. Is, is there a committee on this? I'm just curious, like, is there a planning committee or is it you just took the reins of it?
I mean, they've all, Christmas in the Bay, and they meet at city hall.
Oh, there is a committee.
The girls in city hall meet on it, they've gotten donations for years from different vendors and companies and businesses.
Got you, okay.
I guess just to, like, reiterate the sense, I'm okay with the ten thousand, we budgeted, whether it's from twenty-five, twenty-six, swapping it out. It's the twenty-seven hundred that exceeds it with the concern of being on the hook for it if we don't get those donations. Which, I mean, I'd split it with you, I'll make a, I'm gonna split it with you, but, uh, I'm confident you'll get them as well. But let's pull it off and we'll vote on it separately. Uh, we're gonna pull agenda item number nineteen off of the consent agenda. Uh, so I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda with agenda item number nineteen removed. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Davis, any discussion? Vote the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries six to one. Okay. Now, moving to pulling agenda item number nineteen off, uh, I guess how do we wanna word? How do we wanna word that motion, um, that the city won't be liable for the twenty-seven hundred? And that myself and Councilwoman Davis will split it in the event she doesn't get the donation?
So right now, you, which y'all is telling me that if I don't get twenty-seven hundred dollars worth of donations, then, so the city's not liable, I'll pay for it. Yeah.
Are you confident, because I'll piggyback on it.
Oh, I'm confident.
Yeah, she's got a lot of donations.
We've received calls from donors.
Yeah.
Asking who to make the check payment to.
You'll split it, uh, we'll split it three ways?
We'll all go in.
Four ways?
Yeah, I really want this tree.
You're in five ways?
Really, really want this tree, okay.
Alright. I will call for a motion to approve the purchase of a nineteen-foot Christmas tree with lights and a three-foot, three-D nativity star for twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents from Jubilee Decor, uh, for ten thousand dollars. The remaining two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents will come from donations. In the event that a donation is not made, myself, Councilman Bradford, Councilman Davis, Councilman DeSalvo, Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Moynihan, and Mayor Favre will split the sev- twenty-seven.
Your motion needs to be to purchase the Christmas tree at the exact dollar amount.
Okay.
Most from that vendor.
Motion to approve the.
However you wanna word the other stuff, it's up to you.
Okay.
The motion y'all have to say is give authorization to buy that for twelve thousand dollars, 'cause that's what our financial manual says. And there is two quotes.
Two quotes.
There's following purchasing law from Mississippi.
Okay, so I'll retry that. Motion to approve the purchase of a ni- of a nineteen-foot Christmas tree with lights and a three-foot, three-D nativity st- star for twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents from Jubilee Decor?
With the.
With the, with the provision that we will receive two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents in donations. In the event donations are not received, myself, Councilman Bradford, Councilman Davis, Councilman DeSalvo, Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Moynihan, and Mayor Favre will split the additional two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Holmes, any discussion? Vote the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries six one. And moving on to the attorney's report.
Um, yeah, so I would just, uh, like y'all to, uh, make a motion to approve a resolution setting here and, setting a hearing to determine if, uh, parcel one three seven R dash zero dash four four, four three point zero one, uh, located on Ballard Court, uh, make a motion setting the hearing determine if it's a menace to public health, safety, and welfare to commu- the community. Uh, this is something the administration, uh, asked us to do, uh, I think they got some requests that property looks bad. And, uh, so all this is doing, or all this motion would be doing, if y'all make. Uh, I think they got some requests that property looks bad, and uh, so all this is doing, or all this motion would be doing, if y'all made. Made it would, uh, the, set a hearing so that we can send out the formal notice and uh, move forward that process. The owner would still have a chance to come forward at the hearing and obviously plead their case. Um, and let us know if they don't want it cleaned up and y'all would still have to approve and say that it's blighted and then y'all want it cleaned up. So all this is doing is letting us start that process.
Good. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution setting a hearing to determine a par- said parcel located on Ballard Court as a menace to public health, safety and welfare of the community.
No, I will second that motion. Any discussion?
Um, I received a phone call from one of the property owners in that deal, Mr. Braylon. And they supposed to be getting it cleaned up, getting the mother home out of there, some other things. I say continue with it in case they don't, however. He, I guess his sister notified him, and I think it's supposed to be his property, not his sister's, so there's some kinda. Deal going on with switching names of the property and stuff.
Uh, we can do the, we can set the hearing for, yeah, let's set the, yeah, maybe we redo that and, and pick a date that's further. If they're gonna plan on getting it, you know, it's, what's the, not the next meeting, but the next would be October, is it fourteenth? Yeah, October twenty-first, I guess would be the, and that would give them, us time and, and them time to, to get it cleaned up. Um, and we can still set the hearing, and if, you know, if it's cleaned up by the hearing, I don't have to do, you can cancel the hearing, you don't give anything on it. Yeah, that would be the best, best, best of the world, so.
They are aware that somebody made a complaint and they are acting on it, they just having a hard time finding somebody to go do the work. And he said, got vertigo or something where he can't bend over and do the stuff himself, so, um, but he is aware of the issue and trying to correct it.
Is this Ballard Street in, in Ward six?
No.
Ward, yeah.
He just happened to know.
Right next to Cary Court.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just know the Braylon family something, so he reached out to me.
Appreciate JD and, and administration jumping on that so quick, and that just came up last meeting, appreciate y'all doing that.
Any other discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye, aye.
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 I, motion carries seven zero, need for executive session. And before, before a, a call for adjournment, I did forget one more thing under council business that I wanted to bring up. Um, I know we've received just kind of an update, uh, we've received some financials from the chamber. As well as Alice Mosley, uh, guess wanting to talk about the next steps and what we wanna do. Um, maybe, can we, can we get the administration to maybe notify? Or ask Alice Mosley as well as the chamber about some dates, preferably on a, a Tuesday. That way, um, at our next meeting, we can decide on some of those workshop dates and kinda set them. So.
What was the date you were looking at?
So I was just thinking.
How far out?
Uh, after our October seventh meeting, so maybe at the October seventh meeting, we can set those dates. But just reach out to them, let them know that, hey, we wanna have a workshop since they.
Will do.
So you're wanting to set a workshop date on the seventh?
On the seventh, yeah. Yeah, that way we can notify and get some dates from them. I know Alice Mosley has some director changes right now. I don't know what the availability would be on that. I, I don't, I just don't wanna summon someone to our meeting, just rather put it in their court and ask them for some availability.
No, just ask them some dates after the seventh, and that way y'all have that date the seventh, y'all can.
Can set them then, that sound good?
It's in your hands.
Do we need to make a motion for that, or y'all just?
I don't think so, no.
Perfect, alright.
Didn't, uh, Jordan, did we get anything, Mike, didn't we, we were looking at also the other two gov- uh, city unbilled in, did we get any information or contact back? We met with Boys and Girls Club yesterday, have a conversation with their director and one of their board president. How did that go? Very positive.
Very well, very well.
And what was the conversation kinda centered around?
Uh. At least where, with, with picking up insurance maybe or looking at maybe deed and all, it would return back if anything ever. You know, if they didn't have a Boys and Girls Club, they would take over full expenses of it, so, and they're very welcome on some things.
Could be that they covered the cost of the insurance. And then the senior citizen center. Sixty thou- three thousand dollars.
I was at sixty something.
Sixty-three thousand is our insurance cost.
So, but it was very good conversation, very open and understanding and.
As far as Boys and Girls, have we asked for financials from them? Have they submitted anything?
We've asked it, yes, we've, we've requested, I haven't received anything yet, but.
Whenever they come in, if we can just shoot them a keep email for some available dates as well, that way we keep the ball moving on all these.
And then, and then obviously, the senior citizen center, what they're doing there is great, but I, I, I don't know who runs it, I don't know if we've gotten any information as to the operations of it.
They gathering theirs as well.
They're getting financials.
Talk to them about it all, so we should have everything.
Okay, perfect.
One thing, Mr. Bradford, uh, JD, the, the no wake zone, that we still advertised before hearing together.
Um, I think we still need to decide exactly where we're gonna.
Okay.
Uh, if you'll just let me know exactly, the issue is that the department.
Blanket, huh?
That they won't, they don't like the blanket because it will hinder other boaters, so the Department of Marine Resources won't. You know, recommend it for approval if we try to do a blanket, so we kinda have to pick out a specific area. And if that works, we can probably move forward with, you know, more than one area and figuring out, okay, these are the problems. Because they just don't wanna, you know, hinder all boat traffic and slow everyone down, so if we do a blanket, then it kinda would, would cause that or. And, and they won't approve a blanket, so.
Say any man-made canals?
Um, eh, I think, so, I, I. I, I asked them about that and they're, they're pretty, they, they want points and locations and they, they just. Anything that has to do with the blanket, they're very, because they don't have any reason to, you know, make their job harder than they wanna do, so they, you know, they just wanna. You know, have an exact, exactly where we want it, and, I mean, we can do that, we can work and do multiple different areas and, you know, figure out the problem areas. But we probably need to just communicate about where, um, where that is and, and we can move forward with that.
Map and send it back to you.
That would be perfect.
Guys, I could send you a map of wards five and six, for, 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 to look at, and if y'all just wanna highlight specific areas, we can get that to them, it's easy enough.
Appreciate it, that's all I have, Mr. Bradford.
Okay, perfect. Okay, uh, I will call for a motion to adjourn the meeting of September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman DeSalvo, any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye, aye.
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 I, motion carries.